Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Wyndham Northeast Unified Elementary School District.
Today I'd like to call the meeting for September 18th, 2023 Athens-Grafton School. Special meeting for our community forum tonight. I'd like to make sure everybody's introduced. Now we're going to introduce the board, introduce themselves. Lynn Morgan from Athens.
Rachel Plummer-Grafton.
Catherine Goodwin from Grafton.
Krista Gaye from Athens and I'm a 2006 graduate of the elementary school.
Argyne Merrill from Grafton.
And if the teachers here, thank you so much for coming. Introduce yourselves. We have some new folks, teachers.
First of all, we're an assistant and also a senior. Stereotypical administrative assistant of David Watson. Erin Lee Sittner. And this is Laura, I think.
Hi, I'm Dora, the first second grade teacher.
Well, thank you all for coming. I know Angela can't be here tonight, but she's sent me. I think most of her staff here to support us here tonight, so thank you again. Actually, this is your meeting. We're here to answer some questions, any concerns or any needs. And you want to begin? Is there anybody on the screen that would like to introduce themselves before we start? Do we have anybody?
My name's Crystal Webster. I'm a parent of GES students.
Hold on one second, Crystal. Okay, try speaking now, hopefully you come through.
Crystal Webster, parent of GES students.
So for the record, it was Crystal Webster and she's a parent of a GES student.
Oh, Chris, go ahead.
Chris Lawson, the parent of a fifth grader who's in an IEP. And my question pertains to para support in the 5-6 class. What will be available?
Having something that I usually discuss with anyone, it's the same. We didn't talk about that, but we have under meeting set up to discuss that.
How's the name?
Stacy Taylor-Tandler.
Okay.
Special director.
That all comes from Stacy?
I didn't put that up to her yet.
Yes, thank you.
I'm involved by the Jacksonian to do this. Since we're at, I feel it's simple. I definitely have questions though. I think one thing that was I've been carrying around is I think that we return every summer staff. Just first, getting new staff and old staff, we better as well, about what we can add to our operations. It's great, first, I'm telling you this. So what do we love?
Yeah, I'm very thankful.
I was here last year, I came last year and I really love it. And I love the people, I love the size. I taught in Springfield, I'm a good leader and I had 23 students in my class at first. The third, the para support, a lot better. So here I have 11 students and it's the students who have like a bad day. They get into the needs of it, it's a lot of support between those meetings. I feel like it's a very organic atmosphere in this school. When I come to work, like I see people look forward to being here. I look forward to seeing my students. I feel like I have time to nurture them and educate them. I feel like he gives them a lot of freedom doing what he's best for kids, including naming stuff, project work, nature work. And all that stuff I really believe in part of it. So for a teacher that's sort of later in years, I just feel this is a whole new sort of lease of like, I feel to be here. Challenges would be, I think, the same challenges you see in education everywhere today. I just feel like in some ways, those students know differently than I did when I was a child. I think we are kind of competing in technology, that concerns me. So and I just think the world is a scarier place than it used to be. So challenge for me is how do I induce my students with hope in certain areas? You know, we don't, we don't know the world, we think about the world and how to care for it, how to frame things in a hopeful way. And the world often has challenges. But in terms of the exact work in this school, I think I'm still in that new period of maybe never end. I'm just finding that I'm loving the support that I get here and I love the way I'm able to teach my students. And I have a fear of more of me. And I feel some, so that's not that I'm in a period that's oh, they're coming here, they're coming. And then also I think the sense of feeling that I know everything still students. Easy, because they're just maybe small. I could just let it all go. This is my current career of this school, so I think it's like that. And that not most schools, because they know they go each, and there's weeks like mine, and there's people who use this. Most, every year I get to connect each one of them.
So I've also like, this is my third year of teaching, I started in third, fourth grade. Prior to my career career, I went to teaching. So I had actually, I remember Angela's classroom teacher, classroom teacher. She had a committee, she helped it, protected, so I could get my good place in the area. I felt like I just fell in love with this school, this community. I still want I would offer for a change here. Started teaching in their fourth grade before I moved down to my second grade. I knew like this was the place that I wanted to be, to offer. I think not only did like our building, our community have so much to offer, but even like our surround. I really love our classroom, our eighth and eighth grade department, and I hear that even like, yeah, we got any other than this. Our, the nature of collaboration. And I just see that that's really an opportunity to be, to.
It's always been me. I was a para here before, I've been in the district. Within WNESU, I was a specialized para for 11 years. And then I've been in this position, secretary for the last year. I was a para in the building for two years before that. And this is definitely the most special building that I've ever been in. We're just so supportive and feel so loved as a staff. Knowing the kids, you know, just that being this small atmosphere, it's nice, you know what's going on with them. You begin them that space and that time. And like people said, oh, you're going to become the secretary, like then you won't have like to do anything. But the kids, it's like, no, I still have lots to do with the kids. Every day there's kids who choose to include me in whatever their report plan is. Like on a good day, they take us in the spirit and do something special. And so I still get that, you know, that kid time on a daily basis. I think, you know, we've all said it pretty much, that how supportive we feel. By Angela, by the other people, her ability. You know, like whatever's going on with us, it's, we're trusted. And it just, everything, it's like for the kids, what can we do to make their kids, the kids, you know, feel so good? We've had other, we've had staff who, their kids have started school in another place. And they said, you know, what I'm, what I'm missing is that when my kid shows up, they'll say, hey Cindy, how are you today? Who is that, who is that kid at my kid's school who's going to greet them with a smile and be so excited for them that they're here today? Like who gives them that at their school? And I feel like at our school, like every kid, every staff that meets them at the door, I'm really glad you're here today. We're so glad to see you. And I just feel like from what I've heard in other schools throughout, you know, the whole area, not just the district, but like other districts. It's just not, the joy isn't there, there's just so much to it.
Also think, I was also saying like a lot of like student connection in communities, and I think it's also important that the benefit of a small school itself, to know like who knows, who are copying, who are getting these students. Like you're not, you're talking like almost all the year every day, you have to prove them, like scan them down if it's missed. So I think we, they not forget it with that, and they.
I have a history here too. My son graduated from sixth grade in Grafton. I've worked for the supervisory union for the last probably 30 years as a guidance counselor. And when I retired in 2010, I did some subbing here and I actually subbed for probably five or six years. And got to do all the, all the classes, K to 6. And it's just a joy. Having come from the bigger schools, Central School, at one time Cherry Hill, and I consulted with middle school. When you have big populations, you come here and it's, it's home. And that's the feeling I've had. My son graduated from Purdue, so the education here is great. And individuality that they got and that he got. He had hyperactivity, the lower, but they managed it. And he did very well, so I'm proud of this school. I'm now a chair, but I was chair when they, when this school was four rooms, four room schoolhouse. And so I have history here and as I said, I really love this school very much. And I think it would be nice to fill this school because it was built for 125 kids. But I'm proud of what these teachers are doing and what we do here every day. It's really special. And you should be getting a newsletter. If not, yeah, sign up with Sarah. And then you get to see what they're doing on a daily, on a weekly basis.
And I was, I was part of the first class that came over from Athens in 1999. And so I've been here really since the beginning of Athens kids coming to this school. And now I'm actually an attorney in New York City and I, I work from home. And as she said, I see firsthand how Grafton really laid the foundation to me being successful throughout the rest of my 20-year education career. And I'm incredibly grateful for the leg up that I feel like I got here, especially as they all mentioned, the one-on-one attention that you're able to get when you're in a smaller class. Although when I was here, our classes were a bit bigger. I think we had like 20 in a classroom when I was here, but I'm glad to get here.
I think the biggest challenge we face with the smaller class, why we have the smaller classes? And so many, we've talked about this at board meetings and things, is there's just not a lot of places for families to move into. A lot of homes are being bought out by corporations or individuals, they're being leased them. And we've lost a lot of kids who just, their housing wasn't adequate. And then they weren't able to find other housing, you know, places to rent or even places to buy that are just suitable for young families. It's really, really hard right now in Athens, Grafton, to find places. I think that's why our number is, you know.
Some of the things that is a very good place to stand, like I tend to be very, very, very well with the students here here. They didn't start their education career purely in school. And I feel that they benefited them coming here and they dispersed and they get like one-on-one, one-on-one. And they love being together. Coming from another school, you know, starting there, sometimes scary, they just, they love it, and ask that they were always here. It's my first year teaching and I would do a few process in those schools and I'm the second. I think a lot of things was, you know, you're getting the best of the city. Seeing the way they just have the kids. And since being at the university school, so my thoughts, my short time that I've been here, it's been very.
Any other thoughts, ideas, concerns? Take a bit. She runs in a Leasing. It's really, she took it, took it right on and comes in here and has a really good. She, you know, there's, there's a lot of kids that we see every week and we're also a lot of COVID, seeing them over. And we're able to welcome that again. And our school counselor is also our home to school liaison, and she does preschool liaison. So it's nice for her to be able to attend that type group and get to know the kids. And you know, if there are any needs, then she can, she can help. But others just done such an amazing job and such a successful for, for the other meetings. And then it is really nice that like Michael will be here next year. So you know, if it's, other, any kids are welcome to that, but if it's kids within this community, it's nice because they're getting to know them, building them in the faces and it won't be such a big transition once they're in their new school. Chris, you had your hand up again.
Yes, I have a question about a parent engagement opportunity. Besides the open house on the 26th, are there other opportunities for parent staff teacher engagement? Was there anyone else? Do you?
Well, you're, so you mentioned that, really, you said.
No, I know on the 26th, we've got the open house. And then I assume there'll be parent teacher conferences at some point.
Yep. And there's also, I think we're having some dance parties this year. I know we've had one major, okay, so we're having two dance parties this year too. Yeah, and so.
And in each classroom, which I feel like you're a good one with this Vanessa, but it's, it's class by class is we encourage parents to fill out the volunteer paperwork. And then anytime there is a need, Vanessa does a lot of like cooking, math and writing and all the different components. So each class, as they do something, they'll put it out like, hey, you know, we're going to be keeping on this date. Would any parents like to, you know, come in and help? So some of this sort of class by the class. Was there anything in particular you were looking for?
Just, I don't sense that we're, they were new pre-COVID levels as far as parent and family engagement and all in the school. So I'd like to see that continue to grow.
Any examples of what that might be to make suggestions?
Everything from, if someone can speak to, where we're at with after-school activities, for example. That was an opportunity for our community and parent involvement in the school. I know somewhere's being done on that, I don't know if there's anyone here who can speak, parent status.
So I know recently, maybe last week, a survey was sent out to parents about after-school program.
After-school care.
After-school care. And like one of the people that I'm, parents.
Yeah, it's gonna.
Completed could actually be up to here at the.
So Sarah Doran is the after-school program coordinator. I've seen Angela got together and they got survey and sent it out. And the people who have responded, I couldn't say it's an overwhelming response, but so they're, they're trying to see what, what the needs are, the dates we would be able to offer. And if everything came together, it would be Monday, Wednesdays and Thursdays. There's no busing from any after-school programs. No Tuesday after-school care at any school because of all staff needs across the issue we have on Tuesdays. So they're looking at what that would look like with, from the people who just walked.
Chris, if you, or anybody else, if you go to our meeting that we just had, the board meeting, Sarah was at our meeting and kind of did a run-through of what they've been, how, with all the things they've done and where they're getting to. And a lot of it, again, stems on the survey results. So once that happens, then they'll build off of that. But you can go to the, I think it's on the website, you can watch that part of the meeting and she can explain that.
Yeah. I actually forgot, we're expanding on the garden program. So actually there will be information, but also we do want, getting like, we're putting these new raised beds and following the garden. So they don't have to be the spring, we're really looking for painting all of them too. I think this is going to step up like exactly, and that we're together.
Yeah, one of the reasons why they didn't have the after-school program last year is they couldn't meet the guidelines that are put out by the state and the feds because it's federal money. We lost that money. We didn't have a coordinator, we didn't have involvement with any staff in terms of wanting to do the program. So they didn't meet all those guidelines, so it didn't happen. This year, we're not under ACT, is it ACT 21? We don't have that, so we don't have those guidelines that kind of restrict what we want to do or who, who does what. So Sarah's working with, with an after-school type program three days a week. And it's important that all parents send in that survey. Because they're going to base that on the needs of what the kids need or the parents' needs for the kids. So we're hoping probably sometime in October, after some of the sports events the kids are involved with would be ending and we could begin this program. So it's kind of a work in progress, but we really pushed some kind of after-school activity for the kids. Do you want to add anything, Patty, to that? Money issues?
It was, our best of is funding that program this year. So that's a program for this year, I don't know what we'll be able to go forward with this year, then hack the money, something else.
Money.
To do, maybe even the budget.
As moving forward, I know in January, they put waters in for the playground and those playground equipment will be here in January. But they're hoping for a mild winter and not a wet spring that can be installed. We worked on repairing the septic system out here. At a tune very high, we placed all the pumps, so that's, I guess, working on it, right Sarah? Yeah. We have plans to paint the building. We just have to go out for that and also re-caving, cracking that out here in the play area. So those are kind of two big items on our list will be repaired.
Mary, I think the pumps are so broken, pump is small, 105, the pump's like two days ago, and it's closed three days. So I'm just, it's a hurt.
It's a pretty hefty bill, but it's, it's all fixed. Anybody else have thoughts? Russ? Anybody online have questions?
Not seeing anybody. Chris, up to you, okay, Crystal does.
Go ahead.
So my only other thing is I know there's talk about the parking lot getting paved. And I did talk to Angela a little bit about this already. I know that like parking in general can be difficult because there's not a lot of places to park. But one of the things to kind of think about is the basketball hoop is sometimes really unusable for kids. I know that kids, if there's a car parked next to it, at one point they, a kid was told, you know, well, be easy. Sorry, I have a toddler. So just if there could be, if something around that, because it's really, it feels unusable to the students. Because if there's a car parked there, then if the ball bounces off the hoop into a car, that type of a situation. So thinking about the parking lot and the playground, I don't know if that's something that can be looked at, if it can be moved, or if there's another way to, to allow the basketball hoop to be utilized differently.
We can bring that up, we can bring that up as a thought.
And if anybody does ever park or not, we do ask them to move so that it is always accessible to kids.
No, she was talking about, if we're talking about painting the parking lot, that I'd like you to kind of talk about the convenient basketball hoop. I think they're looking at resurfacing the parking lot area. One issue that was brought up is when folks come to pick up their children, they often park on the side of the building for kind of money and stuff. I did talk to Mike Faulkner today about that issue. And he's going to try to address it with either some shore pack or some stones. But I know it's hard because you tend to park closer to the grassy part and that gets all the mud and there's nowhere for that water to go, but you know, in the road. The other issue is when you're coming down School Street, it is one way. So we're going to check on making sure that there's a sign out there because we've had people go the other way and that can create a problem. So it's, it's just kind of the circle, you come down School Street and you go out into either left or right on Pleasant Street. So that has come up, so we need to, you know, folks, parents need to be aware of it. Mary?
I've already, instead of we feel there is a stop sign, but it's, it's the sound, maybe in other places. I never really would rather pass it in one way. The issue that you need a stop sign, people, sorry, see anything?
See, your phone's right there. I guess I never realized it wasn't a stop sign, I always stopped because you got to look both ways, people. Does the board have any concerns or comments? Yeah, speed of thoughts. Anybody, any teachers, staff? Who else is online? Just Crystal. Well, I thank everybody for coming and hopefully our next community forum will have some more parents. But it's okay, you know. We're here to help and here to do our job to support the school. We're here to help and here to do our job to support the school. Excuse me? We've tried to do them at least three times a year, but because of trying to plan everybody's schedule and issues with events at the school, we've only, I think we've only had two. We'll try for another one.
This is like four days, then two, so that they.
Yeah. And there's a lot of things happening in September and now October with the farm sale and foliage. A lot more people around. So we can bring it up. Hopefully, you know, I'd like to see it later, later, before winter, have another one and another one in spring. But it's great to have your input, really. It's also important, when we have select, a school board meetings to. We have a piece that says public comment, any communications. Anything's coming up, we need, we need to hear it. Or come to the meeting. You're always welcome. But thank you again. Thanks. So motion to adjourn?
Yeah, a second.
Second.